I now call the October thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen work session of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P. M. Would, oh, Mr. Bailey isn't here. Mr. Canaan, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And after that, I'll have an, I'll offer an invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful that we have an opportunity to meet as a city council for the city of Riverton and pray that we'll have inspiration, guidance by thy hand, that we'll understand the issues clearly and that we will be able to make good, sound decisions that will, that will benefit everyone that lives inside of the city limits and those outside as well, that we might be able to be of service in a variety of capacities. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to serve in the city council and pray that we'll be mindful of the needs of the citizens of Riverton. We do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
So would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am here and I would entertain a motion to excuse council members Bailey and, and Gibbon from this evening's meeting.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion. We excuse the councilman Bailey and councilwoman Gibbon from this meeting?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare that we do have a quorum present and I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda?
Seconded.
And been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Any discussion or amendments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye. The next item of business is a presentation from Idea Inc. Kevin?
Your Honor and counsel, my name is Kevin Kerschisnik with Idea Inc., executive director, vice chair. Today with me is Alan Moore, chairman of Idea Inc., Jim Conrad, board member. So you can ask questions as we go. Basically, it's a similar presentation to what we gave in February. We'll go through, give a little overview, economic development. And then what we really wanted to focus on is the strategic plan that the city had for economic development. It was formulated in two thousand and six and we'd like to recommend that that gets updated, perhaps in two thousand and sixteen. So economic development is, WEEDA, all the different organizations are saying the same thing. It's a collaborative effort. It's not just one entity. It's not just one person. It's a collaborative effort to be successful in economic development and we're seeing that throughout the state and here in Riverton. So the economic development building blocks, and the important part is the base down there, the elected, elected officials, community leaders, et cetera, are all on board with the economic development. That has to be the, the sound foundation for economic development to be successful. We believe that we have that here in the city of Riverton and we're thankful for that. Then you get to the next level, which is the state and local, local organizations. And the bulk of our work, where you can see on the right-hand side there, about ninety-five percent is spent doing business, retention and expansion, entrepreneurial development and working with the existing businesses. And then two to five percent are recruiting. We had had several require inquiries from the business council, of which we have responded to those. There was probably from, let's say, four or five that were applicable to our area. One was the tungsten heavy metal that actually went down on the I-80 corridor in Laramie area and that's where they located. And we've responded to those and we'll continue to do that on behalf of the city. So the economic development, if you look at that from a, from a state level, U.S. Department of Labor at the federal level actually requires via the WIOA, which is the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act, to have the states provide a five-year strategic plan or strategy on how they're going to do their workforce investment system. We've done that. Actually, we're working on a new one starting for two thousand and sixteen for the state of Wyoming. And in the, in the plan there, you can see that economic development is mentioned fifty-one times and in the state of the state by Governor Mead, it was mentioned ten times. So very important to the state as well as to our local community. Here's some economic development organizations that are instrumental in, in our success thus far and will continue to be going forward. I'll talk about a couple of them that have had the, the largest impact, but they all are very important to us. So the business council, that's where a majority of our funds have come for the development projects that we've done to date. And those are state funds that are run through the business council. They come in the form of a BRC, Business Ready Community Grants and other grants to assist us to do infrastructure, to build buildings, to improve lots, et cetera, for future economic development. And that's where bulk of the funds have come. There's quite a few things happening at the state level. The legislatures have asked for more accountability, some recapture. They're looking at the BRC guidelines presently to see what modifications they're going to make to that. Some of them will have an impact on us. Luckily, we've been doing this for several years and, and we're in a better financial position than, say, some of the other communities to continue doing economic development, even if those funds were to be lessened or were to dry up entirely. The workforce development, again, attended the governor's summit back in two thousand and fourteen, the summer, and they talked about the same thing. Collaboration is absolutely critical. They hear from a lot of employers that they have jobs, but they can't fill them because they don't have workers that are skilled enough to fill those positions. So the workforce is another key part of getting the individuals trained. And the Department of Labor actually stated that President Obama wanted to double the number of internships and apprenticeships that were offered in the coming years versus previous years. So they're putting a strong initiative into it with the WIOA that I mentioned earlier. That's where a lot of the federal training funds will come from to help train workers. And CWC has been very successful in, in capturing some of those funds and utilizing them as well as Department of Workforce Services. WEEDA, which is the state, it's Wyoming Economic Development Association from the state, they have several conferences per year. It allows all the economic development entities in the state to get together, to discuss best practices, to learn what else can be done and how we can help improve economic development for our communities. And there's some of the objectives there, I won't go through all of them, but again, promoting the training and assisting local economic development activities. I should mention that the model that a lot of communities are using, well, throughout the state are, are quite diverse. In Torrington, for example, they pass a tax that allows them to fund the economic development. Here, what we do is we have a volunteer board and there's only one paid position at the Idea Inc., that's Economic Development Director, and it's a part-time position presently. The rest are all volunteer businessmen and women from the community. Then we take those funds and we end up using, we take the velocity of the income from the revenue stream of the rents from the buildings that we lease, and then we use those for additional economic development. So that model, in our opinion, is, is the best way to do that. And we've continued to do that and we can discuss it in more detail if you want, but that's the model that, that we've been using. This is the cover sheet of the strategic plan for economic development that we talked about and we want to talk some more about it. This was in two thousand and six. You can see on the side here, there's quite a few of those that Idea Inc. and RECDA, which is Riverton Economic Community Development Association, we run that as well. We're responsible for those initiatives there and assisting with some of the others. Given the bandwidth that we have, we've not been able to address all those at a hundred percent. We've prioritized them and we'd like to discuss those a little bit with you today and make sure that we're all on the same page as what the priorities should be. There is an agreement in place between Idea Inc. and the city of Riverton for economic development purposes and it's been in place since two thousand and seven. And basically what it states is that Idea Inc. will provide the economic development efforts and, and general area marketing for the community. And as we read through the agreement and what's happened and transpired thus far, is the city has determined that the services of Idea Inc. is the most effective and efficient way to accomplish that. So here are the services that the, that Idea Inc. provides to the city. And we act as the POC, the point of contact for the top items there. Again, through the business council, Roger Bauer, our local representative, is, is doing a great job for us and helped us in many, many capacities. Tribal economic development, helping Mr. Conrad and some others, we're starting to make advancements in that area. WEEDA, that I mentioned, and, and the other programs. Then we coordinate and support volunteer efforts for those items there. RECDA, again, that meeting is on the fourth Wednesday of every month at the Sundowner Restaurant. Encourage everybody to attend. Don't have to be a member, just show up. We talk about different community issues. At a presentation from Superintendent Snyder about the school district, the job corps, et cetera. So it would encourage everybody to attend that if at all possible. Then we coordinate the economic development work, the city, research and planning, and as they, we go down that list, those are some of the areas that we haven't had as much time or resource to focus on, but done a pretty good job on, on the top areas. And then this is the reporting in the agreement. So as Idea is going to, you know, maintain communication, one city councillor staff member, so Mr. Weaver is on the Idea Board, he attends all of our meetings and is up to speed on what's going on. We will come and give presentations on a, and, well, actually twice a year, February one and this presentation here. And, you know, you can look at the books, whatever, it's, it's open for council to, to look at, make recommendations, encourage you to attend any board meetings. The Idea Inc. board meetings are on the first and third Thursday of the month and they're at Mr. Moore's office. So you're welcome to attend that and it's at seven thirty a.m. It's a little early. RECDA, by the way, is at seven a.m. So it's earlier. Okay. So Idea Inc., it's actually an acronym to improve and develop economic activities for the city of Riverton in Fremont County. Several of the projects, as you'll see in a minute, that we did predominantly are for Riverton, but we did do the railcar facility in Shoshone, for example. And then Lander, of course, has LEDA and Leader out there that is doing very similar things and we're working closely with them now. Idea Inc. is a nonprofit 501(c)(4) corporation, was formed in, in eighty-five. As I mentioned, it is a volunteer board and the, the two sister organizations, RECDA that we had talked about, and then also the Riverton Depot Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) and that allows us to work as a charitable foundation. So like the skate park, we were able to hold the funds for them and distribute them as needed. The park down on Sunset, same way, J.C. Park, when they were doing the improvements there. So those, and we also do stuff down at the, the Riverwalk, which I'll get into here in just a little bit. This is Idea's mission statement. Known for expertise in retaining, growing and attracting businesses to the Riverton metropolitan area. Again, there's an initiative by the business council. It's called Business Retention Expansion and it's in all the counties. And what they're doing is gathering data about existing businesses and saying, okay, what do you like best about the community? What would you like to have improved? What are your barriers to economic growth? Just to name a few. And so we gather that data, we'll put it into a database and be able to pull from that and say, you know, what is the, the most common issue that, that we've seen so far? A lot of them have mentioned the air service that we're all aware of, for example. There's other items that can come to the forefront that help us focus our efforts. And then, of course, what we're doing well, you know, a lot of the businesses, we've had five interviews locally here and all four of them said there isn't any major barriers to expansion for their business. So that's a positive. And we can get into more detail later there. Utilizing the available resources and then creating a diverse economy is, is important as the energy sector starts to sag at different times and then rebounds, need to be as diverse as possible. So here's the projects that we did. Still more to come, but the Brunton Fiskers Phoenix Facility, which is on the top right there, that was the first one in oh-four, we started, so we actually built that. And in the packets that we handed out, it had quite a bit of information on the financial side that you'd received before of what the investment was, what the business council grant amount was, how much we had to get the loan for and the recapture. So that should be for, for all these facilities. The second one is the BTR, BTI Railcar Facility, and that's in Shoshone. And that's going, going well. They have, employment is actually is up. There's a new company called Wasatch that has actually come in there and has taken over the operations and they continue to operate today on a, on a short-term lease basis. Those, both of those two buildings, some of the tenants have actually inquired about purchasing the building and the infrastructure for their long-term use. And so we're presently pursuing those today and we'll see what transpires. But it's a, it's a good thing for the longevity of those businesses here in our community. The Idea Inc. building, which is the old Alco building, that was renovated and legacy molding is on the east side and in the center is Bells, which you're all aware of. And then we are working on putting a tenant into the west side of that building. And then the Smart Start Daycare, which is on the bottom right, that has been very successful for us, for the employers. One of the things that they had said in the past was, we need a daycare. If we have workers that have a swing shift or a second shift, they have nowhere to take their kids. So this was an opportunity, they had some expanded hours, they do a great job, Dean and Donna do a great job over there with expanded hours and, and helping people out. So those are the, the projects, the, the growth side. This is the, this is the Hunter Farm land and that project has actually been going on since August of two thousand and thirteen. So we're already over two years on that project. It's getting closer, I guess I can say, and that's, I guess that's really all we can say, right? It's been, it's been a long process, but we believe that it will come to, come to fruition and it'll actually get to auction. There's just one small, small minor issue at this point that the governor's office and the OSLI Office of State Lands Investment is considering. And then once they get through that issue, then we believe that the, the land will be offered for auction. We'll have sixty-day notice on that, so we'll be able to advertise, get as many developers in as possible and then go to auction for that land. And the Depot Foundation, so this is the Riverwalk project, so down by the fairgrounds and it's paved. There is the fire pit that's down there for rotary, there's benches, got the posts in there so you can get bicycles through and not motorized vehicles. So some improvements continue to be made down there. The high school kids came down and volunteered to spread out the bark chips and they made good progress there. So it continues to be a, a good community effort to, to improve that land there. And then, of course, we had additional assistance for the Police Foundation, Wyoming Modelers Park, the Playground and the Park Association, et cetera. So that's the Depot Foundation. And so if, you know, you want to set up a tour, you got any questions, comments, there's my contact information and Alan's and, you know, you can feel free to contact us at any time. And then I added this guy in so we could come back to the strategic plan. And that was the other handout that, that we gave, which was, I think it's five pages or five different sections, talking about the strategic initiatives for the city. And so, oh, Mr. Gunnison, John Gunnison, a board member has joined us as well. Welcome, John. And if, you know, there's any questions, we'd entertain that. If you wanted to get into the strategic plan, we could do that as well.
Mr. Canaan?
Sir, I, I noticed you said that ninety-five percent of your efforts go towards retaining business here in Riverton. And I guess my concern is, is what, what seems to be driving all, because I, you kind of walk around Main Street and there sure seem to be a lot of empty businesses or for sale signs. What, what seems to be going on in your, I mean, you got the building up there by Subway on Main, that's been empty since I moved here in oh-three. John Deere built a new building and that thing is, I would think it'd be a fairly new building, that's been sitting empty. Worcester Furniture, that they moved out or that's ready to get sold, the little pottery place down from them. Brooks &amp; Breyer is empty there on Main and I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mammoth Music has got a for sale sign hanging on, on, on that building. So what's, what's going on there with, you know, if ninety-five percent of our effort is to retain business, what's, what's going on?
Well, yeah, a large part of it is the economy, right, as we go through that, that cycle. And on the business retention expansion portion, for example, I'll give you a couple of examples on the other side. So legacy molding, they were looking at leaving, actually, they were going to move down to Colorado. So we were able to go through the effort to get them into the Idea Building, which allowed them to be retained. And now they've actually acquired additional business and they're expanding, so they've taken more square footage in that building to continue to expand. You know, a lot of our efforts have been, what'd you call, core businesses or in the manufacturing sector, trying to get those, what we'll call core jobs, in place so then the service sector jobs can be there to help support that. You know, other, other companies in town have, have struggled over various times, whether that be Pertec or Brunton, you know, they've been, they've been cyclic by nature. The retail side of things is, is a little bit different because those would typically follow those core jobs. And we've seen a fair amount of the, the retail move, shift, you know, close down like you had mentioned. We also saw some new ones come to town, you know, we were able to bring Bells in for an expansion, Famous Footwear down the road at the Smith Shopping Center, for, for example. The things that we talked about at WEEDA were, how do you revitalize the downtown? You know, what, what can you do there? And there's grants that are available to help do just that, that helps the existing businesses to grow, whether that be bringing, you know, a ban shell, some type of activity downtown where you have more people coming through. So the business council realizes that, WEEDA realizes that, that that's something that all of the Wyoming communities have struggled with. So they're starting to put together some initiatives to improve that. That's one of the initiatives on, on that side of things. And so we'll be participating in that as well. So that's just a, a couple of things that are going on. You know, I'd have to look at each one of those businesses specifically as to, you know, why they decided to close down because I think they have different reasons.
Yeah, I understand. Like I said, I just, you know, like you said, you, you kind of wander, you know, Main Street and
Right.
It's, you know, it looks, it looks, it looks a little bleak, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of for sale signs and a lot of empty windows down, down through there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's one of the things we're going to look at is the downtown area, what can we do to help revitalize that? Other comments?
[laughing]
Nope? Okay.
Looking for additional comments.
Come on, Alan, we want to hear some comments.
There is nothing that we can do that will forestall old age.
Come up, come up to the mic. We have this beautiful sound system, now everybody
There is, there is nothing that we can do that will help forestall old age and people retiring. What we can do is try to nurture an environment where their replacements can get information and can enable themselves to acquire the business. Each of those businesses that you saw that closed means that they didn't have a succession plan in place or they weren't making money or my particular complaint is they work the same hour as I do, which means that when I go to shop at their places, I can't do it at noon, before I go to work or after I go to work. And if you don't provide service to your customers, they aren't going to come. You know, I'm a, I'm a CPA, but I make arrangements for all of my clients that care to. I will meet with them anytime, anyplace, except when it's bedtime. And so I, I meet with my clients on Saturdays, I meet with them on Sundays, I make appointments at night after six, seven or eight o'clock. I make myself available so that they can use my services. If you're a retail business and you don't make yourself available, people won't use your services. So part of it is the time that people are open, part of it is the age of the people, part of it is not having a succession plan in place and part of it is if you don't make any money, you can't keep the doors open. So all of those events occur and what we can try to do as a community is to build an economy and have a community. You can't build an economy without a community and you can't have a community without an economy. So what we try to do is to lift them both, try to create as pleasant a place to live as possible and try to provide an environment where people who provide goods and services will have a market. So some of the things that Idea Inc. and the Depot Foundation do is we use the Depot Foundation to enable people with good ideas to start a project and carry it through to fruition quickly. And we like to enable them to strike while the iron is hot. For instance, the skate park organization, we supplied our, the Depot Foundation's income tax status 501(c)(3) to enable people who gave contributions to the Depot Foundation on behalf of the skate park. We enabled those people to get an income tax deduction as a charitable contribution if they itemize their deductions on their tax return. We also provided some assurance to donors that their money would be used for the purpose that it was given and that there would be a quote-unquote "adult supervision" and that the bills would be paid. We provide those services free of charge, we take no commission, I even pay the postage. All, every dollar that was given to CSA through the Depot Foundation will go to the project that's in the city park. So that part of our organization is to enable things to occur quickly without having to submit an application to the Internal Revenue Service to get a tax-exempt status without having to hire attorneys to draw up articles in corporation, file with Secretary of State. We can take care of that and serve as an umbrella organization for the people who have good ideas and that's what we do with that entity. RECDA, we act as a sounding board and try to allow people to have input and it's our way of getting information from people on the street. There are no requirements for membership, all you have to do is show up and participate. So that's how we try to enable people to have input and participate if they may not otherwise be able to. We have, we have protections in place for We have protections in place for Idea Inc. and for the Depot Foundation, so that we can eliminate the possibility of us or any people in the future looting the organizations. In our Articles and Corporation, we have what's called a dispersal clause, that says if and when the organization becomes non-functional, its assets will be transferred to another not-for-profit organization or to an agency of the city, state, or county. We have a conflict of interest policy that says that all the board members will announce any conflicts that they have. If they have conflicts, then they will be asked to leave the room, we will vote without them being present, and that is to make sure that greed does not color any decisions. So we have a board that has high ethical standards. We hire and fire each other, which means that we are responsible to ourselves. If we have a board member that is not contributing, we can retire them. If we have needs at the board level for people with particular skill sets, we can go recruit them and make them available. So that's what we do. Any other questions? You know, people have accused the Business Council of picking and choosing winners and losers. That is not the case, because the clients that we have, that being Idea Inc., the people that we have built these structures for, they don't own them, we do. And we have arrangements that ensure that we do not enrich ourselves, or accumulate a little empire, if you will. There is a misunderstanding that the Business Council actually hands packages of money to businesses and to individual persons, and that is not the case. So what we have tried to do with the funds that have been put into our stewardship from the Wyoming Business Council is to create a standalone, self-sufficient economic development organization that enables us to be effective without having to hire grant writers, or become grant writers, who write grants for next month's paycheck. And then when that paycheck is used up, they write grants for next year's paycheck. We have used the Wyoming Business Council funds, and Idea Inc.'s ownership of them, and our leases with our tenants, to create a, hopefully, self-sustaining, self-perpetuating, standalone economic development entity, so that in the case that the Wyoming Business Council went out of business, we wouldn't. And if we grew to be disfavored by the Riverton City Council, we could probably survive without you. And that's what we have intended to do, and that's what we're working on. So any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Alan. Have you got some more to do here on this?
On this area?
The update of our economic development plan?
No, I do not have an update. Just wanted to discuss that and hopefully get approval, or future approval, that we would update this plan. Now, there's quite a few items in here that are complete, there's some that are still being worked on, and others that haven't been worked on in 10 years because of low priority. So at some point, doesn't have to necessarily be tonight, we would like to go through that with the council and make sure that the priorities are correct going forward. And I think when this one was developed, there was a facilitator that came in and did so, with the help of the city, Idea Inc., and the citizens of Riverton.
Your Honor, I think we should just go through, you know, touch on them a little bit, and then maybe set a date in the future to dive into this or hire a facilitator.
Start with a little advertising. Go over it.
That machine's too small to be effective.
Okay, not sure why it's not displaying here, let's try this. There we go. Okay, so here's the plan, I think you guys have that in your packets as well. I guess I don't have to go through all the details, but here was the core economic values we had from the business government, training, economy, and so forth. And I guess since we're just doing the overview, if that's what you like to do, Mr. Weaver, we'll go to the next. So Section 1, for example, is retain and expand businesses. And there was the goal, the measures, some of the critical strategies, and then the implementation agents, and that's the way that all these goals worked, had them defined, tried to quantify them, and then the responsible party. So some of these, Idea Inc. and RECDAs were responsible for, others we were contributors, and some we didn't have any effect on at all. So I don't know, do you want to go through each one line by line?
Yeah, the goals and...
Okay, so to expand and diversify Riverton's economy with increasing wages, through the diversification. So if you go through the critical strategies, for example, develop an RECDAs outreach program, specific needs, we're starting to, well, we've done the program itself, which is the RECDAs meetings, have a membership, and we're sharing ideas, as Mr. Moore had mentioned earlier. And continue to go forward, we're going to be doing some additional items with that, like for example with the hub zone, make sure that the businesses are aware of that, and the benefits of being in a hub zone. Two is act as a liaison between the business and government to facilitate communications and issue resolution, that's an ongoing, there's quite a bit to be done there.
Tell me what a hub zone is?
A highly, underutilized business zone, which is like, because we're by the reservation, and the unemployment rate is beneath a certain level, and your unemployment rate is low enough, and the city size is small enough, then you qualify for subsidies from a federal government standpoint.
Okay.
And that's, okay, then you can work, so 1.4, and that'd be the city and the county. 1.5, the hometown competitiveness program was something, again, 10 years ago, that was the hot item that needed to do, not calling that anymore. This is perhaps recruitment or expansion, there's different programs, but the hometown competitiveness program, not aware of that at this point. So that'd be one, for example, that we would want to update to a new standard going forward. Develop and implement programs to attract more prospective employers to the community, or employees, and again, there's, you know, a whole host of entities that are involved with that. And so, you know, what I could do is I could provide something to the council and say, okay, this is where we feel we are with each one, whether it's 50% complete, 75%, that's what we want to do, just spend a little bit of time on each one, see if you guys think that these are still important for that area, you know, and maybe we just look at the large sections. Retain and expand business, obviously that would be, but do we want to add additional categories in here? Do we want to refine these categories as they are today? That would probably be the first part. And then I think to really get down to the critical strategies, we'd have to, you know, have the group of these two entities and the representation from the citizenship to say, yeah, this is important to us as a community or not. You know, the civic center or community centers in there, you know, there was the Job Corps, which again, we were successful in getting, due to the accolades and hard works of a lot of entities in town, and Sandy Barton and Boses, you know, et cetera, the list goes on and on and on. So those would perhaps be modified, this is now we work with the community to allow these graduates from the Job Corps to then enter into our workforce, you know, maybe the goal would shift that way.
Mr. Marshall?
With the Job Corps, we were there, and they were talking about the welding class being completely full. The different jobs that they're training for, have we scaled or looked or determined that there were certain businesses that that would facilitate and help, that we could try and encourage to come to this area because of this uniqueness of job skills?
Right, and this Job Corps is focusing on the energy, you know, it's one of the unique energy-centric job corps, which is because of the area that we have for the energy sector. There were other disciplines, like for example, on nursing, you know, we had looked at that, and that was on the original list of training, and graduates would be in the nursing program, and they took that away, Department of Labor did. And, you know, you'd have to ask Julie, you know, what the reasoning was behind that, but that was done at the federal level, not at the local level. And so with the community, the intent is to get the local businesses involved with that. So the Job Corps students would then go into an internship, and they would work with the business, back and forth, learning the business, learning what it takes, and then utilizing their skills, with the intent that then when they graduated, like a co-op program is done today, then they would be hired by those businesses. So that's the intent of that program, is to start that early on in the education process, get OJT, on-job training, and then hopefully keep them in the community and expand the businesses here. So that is the intent, yes.
Mr. Carter? But you're right, you know, now we can advertise welding, you know, where we have schools and things that we really didn't have before, like what they're trying to do with, what's the one in Shoshone, for the rail cars? I'm assuming a lot of that would be welding, but see, those are things we haven't been able to really advertise as an added feature. It will have, you know, now through the Job Corps, we have more, you know, training in areas we really haven't had.
I understood that the difficulty was getting skilled labors over there, they had such a high turnover when, I mean, it was just, it's a skilled, to repair railroad cars, and just the skills in doing that, they couldn't compete and keep good employees.
Yeah, and remember, CWC had the training program for BTI? That's exactly what they were doing, is in training them, they'd come to work for BTI, and then what Cliff and Dave were saying is that then they ended up losing a fair number of those employees to the energy sector, go out and weld pipe in the field for X dollars more per hour, and they were doing that. You know, so I guess you're kind of feeding that whole system, but that was the intent was to get the skilled laborers for BTI and the local businesses.
Unintended consequence.
Yes.
Your Honor. Go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
Kind of piggyback off that question, now that we have the Job Corps here, have we been able to network, to bring any new businesses, are there, because with what we have here, once we produce one or two classes out of there, we're going to fill a majority of the vacancies. So has there been any outreach to any, to bring any new businesses into that area to facilitate? Because the classes are huge out there, and when they complete it, so when we fill that, then what do we do with the people that we're pushing out here? Do we send them somewhere else, or is there plans to bring?
From an economic development standpoint, yeah, we'd like to bring new businesses here. And we haven't actively recruited yet, you know, because there's a certain period of education time for them to get their degrees and to move forward, but we're putting that in our recruitment package, and so we list the Job Corps as one of the major employers and one of the major training facilities in the local area, as well as CWC, for getting workers trained. You know, and so it's kind of, I'd say they're, you know, the GED level on up to the trades, then you're going to have CWC, you know, UW, and then even beyond that, if there's specific skills that a company needs, their employees can use the Workforce Development Training Grant, which is state funds that are available to train new workers, $4,000 per annum for a new job skill, or $2,000, up to $2,000, at a 60-40 ratio between, from the employer's standpoint and the state, actually, the state pays 60, the employer would pay 40% to have them trained for a new skill. So there's several programs that are out there to help, and we do mention those in our recruiting packages, and when we're talking to businesses, that hey, this is available, and it's, you know, something unique for this state that not all the other states have, given our financial condition and position.
Thank you.
Your Honor. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, I'm a little confused of what you're asking for, what I would like to see is what points here that you want to change or expand on. I would like to see that, instead of trying to go through each and every one of these, I would like to see the idea of what you guys want to do, and what you want to change to update this plan.
Okay, yeah, we can do that, we'll give you a redline version of where it's at today, what we recommend going forward for your review, and then we can decide which ones will and won't be implemented. That's fine. Yeah, the question I really had, though, is do you want to go through another facilitation exercise, where, you know, we bring in a third-party facilitator to go through this and say, no, we need to change this thing from a major standpoint, macroscopically? If we do, then we'd probably want the facilitator. If we think we're on the right track, and things are happening pretty close to where we want them to be, then I can surely make the modifications to this, you know, and submit that.
Well, it's a little tough for me to see what you want to change and bring a facilitator in until we know what you want to change. We'd have to look at it, for me, I'd have to look at it first, so this is the points I want to change. Like for example, retain and expand business. I'm just using this as an example, 1.4, if that's one of the items you wanted to change, this is what I would like to see. If he doesn't want to do anything with the other ones, then, and then we could, as an example, say, okay, I want to change 1.1, see what we can do with that. These are just examples that, this is what I would get out of it, not just to say, okay, we're going to change this, I want to know what your change or what your changes want to be.
All right, understand, yeah, and if you look at the implementation agent, for example, you know, not all those are Idea Inc., and so we can make recommendations, if you want us to do it from a blanket perspective, just go through and redline it. We could surely do that and provide that, that would streamline the process, because I agree, going through each one, there's going to have a lot of questions and understanding it, and there's probably going to need to be other entities involved here that may not be in a room today. So, but if you would like to do that, we could take that as an action item to provide a redline version.
See, and it seems to me like, that's why if we went ahead and did a facilitated workshop on it, that would help us to come to grips with these issues and decide, because there's more than, it's a bigger group of people than what's represented in this room tonight.
I believe that is true, it's correct.
And so the facilitated approach would make that possible, to bring in a lot of different individuals into the planning process, and give them some buy-in to it, as well as city council buy-in. So I see that as a better way to try to deal with this, and so then, you know, but from a working standpoint, I wonder if it might not be possible for you to, you know, just go through that document there, and say, you know, yellow, we done it, and red, we didn't do it, and need to, okay, and green is, we don't think this is appropriate, you know, so kind of color-coded a little bit or something, so that we've got a feel for the direction that you're leaning and think we ought to do, that'd give us maybe some foundation for future discussion. But I don't expect you to be able to do that for us, standing there at the podium tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor, appreciate it. Okay, yes, we'll do that.
So those are all the elements of that. So those, those are all the, the elements of that, though?
For the entrepreneurial program? Okay. So Mr. Conrad referring to is, as we were able to have funds available from the cash flow of, of the operations, we said, all right, what else can we do to help the community expand and grow? And one thing that we've seen over time is that you need a champion of a project. All of our successful projects have had a champion that says, I'm not going to let this fail, and I don't care what it takes, I'm going to make this work. And those are the entrepreneurial folks, and so what we've done is we started to talk about the entrepreneurial programs that we could put in place to help facilitate this mentality and to help these individuals to bring their businesses to light, to fruition to our community, or grow them here in our community. And so Central Wyoming College, Lynn McCullough is a program that she's working with out of Jackson that does just that. There's, the entrepreneurs come in, they go through training, everything from, from finance to running a board, to product development, services, et cetera, customer service, and then they, they have those tools then to help build their business. And so we've looked at that model, we've looked at the Wyoming, University of Wyoming incubator, which does the same thing with research companies, we've looked at other models in different states to try to figure out what's the best way to do that, to promote this entrepreneurial, entrepreneurialship, to promote the folks that are going to basically commit to make that business successful. And so we're, we're looking at that and we're, we're pretty excited about being able to do that compared to where we were several years ago, where it was just maintaining the, the buildings and the infrastructure to, to get cash flow to do something. So talked about business plan, competition, we, we even talked about it tour 23, which I know a lot of you participated in, and that's that statewide initiative to talk about the, the issues and what's going well in each community. And entrepreneurialship was one of the large ones that came out of our community, and we're going to continue to push that to help promote new businesses in our community, so. So it's exciting.
One of the questions that we're looking at and trying to resolve is institutions like the state of Wyoming have a physical facility that they make space available in to these entrepreneurs. That means that somebody is subsidizing the heat, light, and power. In Casper, for instance, they built an, a, an incubator, and then the entity that built the incubator found out that you can't make a break-even operation if you are leasing space for no rent to businesses that are in the startup phase and don't have any cash. So one of our questions is, is can we do an intellectual incubator, if you will, without having to have the anchor of a physical facility? Can we set up a board of people or a group of people who have skills that are transferable and they would share with the people who are trying to get a leg up and become entrepreneurs? Maybe we can do that rather than build a, a six-story building and try to support that with businesses that don't have any rent. Some of the other models are, is build an incubator, put people in it, and then write grants so that they can get the money to pay you rent. And that doesn't seem to be a real useful practice as far as we're concerned. We want the people that we are assisting to become champions and be able to operate on their own. So how do we do that is, is part of the question that we're wrestling with.
And it could very well be that none of us here at this table have the answer to that. So, you know, so in, in a way, you know, we're hoping that you guys can supply us with that direction and, and, and a way to get it done. So we're, we're, I think we're all excited about the potential for economic development in Riverton, and, but maybe here at the dais, we don't have the tools. So we're, we're grateful, we're grateful for the service that all you guys on the IDA Board render on a, on a daily basis in promoting and sustaining and maintaining business in Riverton. So certainly, I'm, I'm a fan of the concept. Okay. So we can see how we need government cooperation to accomplish some of this stuff, we can... So I, I, so, so what do you think, Mr. Weaver, about a timeframe for this? This is 2015, right? And so we would like to do this next calendar, during the next calendar year or for the next calendar? You want this done before it's 2016?
No, Your Honor, I, I think we're thinking about doing it in 2016.
Do it in 2016, okay? All right, we'll, we'll, we'll work, we'll work in that direction so that we have, we can schedule some time for that and make arrangements for somebody that can help us work through it.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Does anybody know who this Julie Brewster is? Is she still around, or she worked for Pacific Corp., et cetera? I mean, as you look at this, it's, it's amazing of some of the goals that are in economic development, I mean, it goes all the way to alcohol abuse, to establishing a police junior patrol program and a youth delegate council, and, I mean, there's a lot to this, so it's pretty exciting to review. And then there's some things that we're still struggling with that they've struggled 10 years ago, and then there's others that have been accomplished and that we can move on.
Yeah.
I'm, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I mean, the assets that Riverton has is at disposal, we have a airport that is number one, we have excess land up there that we could possibly lease or sell or provide, we've got air service either to Salt Lake or to Denver. I mean, there are all kinds of possibilities that other communities have utilized to lift themselves up with their bootstraps, and I don't think they start now with what we've got. And I'm not dis, excuse me, I'm not dissatisfied with what you've done, I think it's marvelous, I'm appreciative. I'm just saying that we've, you know, it's a great place.
More to do.
Anybody have any further questions for ID Inc.? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Conrad?
How long have I been on the board? I don't know how long I've been on the board, in three or four years or something, but I just wanted to mention being a, you know, I'm a citizen of Riverton, and I, I want you to know that I appreciate everything you guys do for us and for me, and, because I know that, you know, these are the kind of jobs that are important and have to care a little to do it. As you know, we had Phil Kristoffson before Kevin, and Phil did a great job. Kevin, you see, he's, we haven't lost any steps, you know, by having Kevin take over where Phil was at, and, and also Alan and his wife, I don't know anyone who's more, has more integrity and more honesty and who really does have a desire to, to help this community, and, and that's a joy for me to be a part of it, just to be around, you know, good people like that and the other board members. I do believe that one of the things that there's no easy answer to, and there's no solution, easy solution, but somehow we have to, as we have opportunities which will come down the road, we have to do something to help the, the border go away and the prejudices, you know? Every time that's in the paper, I get a call from Atlantic City where our bankers are wondering about it, and it does affect economic growth in our area. And I don't know the solutions to it, I just know that as we go forward, there's going to be opportunities that we're all going to have to try to dissolve it so it doesn't become an issue that people are afraid of and fear to move into our community. I think every time it becomes a big issue, I, I can see the effects in outside people, people who live here, it's, doesn't have that same effect, because we've lived here, we know. You know, we don't have some of the fears that the media tends to, to bring in and amongst it. And I really don't know and understand all this stuff, I just know that sometimes, you know, that we can do things to help soften that border, make it possible so that we can have growth, economic growth on both sides, and that we can continue to, you know, become stronger. But it's going to take an effort on both sides in trying to make this whole thing so it's not as big a, a deal as it really seems to be.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Is there anything else we need to talk about? I ought to put a plug in for Empty Bowl, which is coming up Thursday, October the 29th, from 5:30 to 8:30. So the city will have several tables there and, and there's going to be lots of soup to eat, and it's cheap, you know, 10 bucks for an individual, 25 bucks for a family, and, and so you could come and, and rub shoulders with the good people in Riverton in a, in a kind of a slightly different atmosphere than what you might run into at a typical fundraiser. And it's a good cause, and, and so I think that's a, a positive, a positive thing and good opportunity in Riverford, Riverton for us to have some good time on, on a Thursday night and get a, and get a good meal. So I've got that, and then Stephen, I thought that there was something else that we were going to talk about that I was going to mention tonight.
The Rosa.
Oh, oh, so I sent out, I forwarded Rosa Salamanca's email, so we're, we're definitely lined up on, on that Wednesday, the 21st, is it? For... I think it's 21st, yeah, so we're definitely lined up on the 21st for the first session on the community dialogue that Rosa Salamanca, the Department of Justice, is sponsoring, and the, the first meeting is going to be at Fort Waschiki and at the community center there. And I think she's going to try to combine the, the first two meetings so that we have one, part of that session is going to be about getting to know each other, and the other, and the second one is, is try to describe the, in some way, where we're at now. And this kind of goes along with Mr. Conrad's comments, is an attempt to have some dialogue about race and the reservation and how the city of Riverton meshes and how we, how we can get along and work together. And so I, I think this is a, it has the potential to be a, a positive contributing thing, and, and then we'll have a couple more sessions after that, about three weeks apart, and so there'll be one at, probably at Arapahoe and another one at CWC. We thought this first one would be at CWC, and we got the building scheduled for that okay, but then Ms. Salamanca was unable to travel because of lack of budget authority from the Congress, and she's got that figured out now, and there's a budget to work with at the federal level, and so she's back traveling. But we're going to try to, we're going to try to combine the, the first two discussions into one, and then the, the third one is to try to figure out where we'd like to be, what, what goals do we, can we agree on as a community in general? And, and then the fourth one is to try to come up with some solutions as to how we might achieve that. So as, as additional communications comes, I'll forward that to council so that you can, you can see that, and I, I hope we'll be able to have a, have a good representation from the city at those meetings. Only going to be about two hours, so from 6:00 to 8:00 on Wednesday night. So the first one's October 21st.
Can we get, Your Honor, some corrections to there?
You, you bet, you bet, we can figure that out. Make a map, okay? And, and for that matter, we could probably take the big bus, a van or something from So we could, if we thought about it a little bit, we, we could organize some transportation there, okay? If we had a lot of people from Riverton wanting to go, maybe we'd get a word of us, so we'd all get there. So, okay? They were, they were certainly going to try to run the bus the other direction from Fort Waschiki to Riverton, so maybe we could run one from Riverton to Fort Waschiki. So we'll work on that and...
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't, you know, the people that you drive up there.
I think that's, that might be the case, especially after dark, yeah? Just don't know the way around.
I'd get lost.
Yeah, just don't know your way around.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. I've traveled all those roads, so I'm familiar with it and know the country, but there's a lot of people that wouldn't, wouldn't be in that same situation, okay? Is there anything else that anybody's got to comment on? I had to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Been moved in second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like we're adjourned, thank you.